This meeting is ordered. Ask you to please rise. And ask Selectman Timney to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we have an interesting agenda today. So, from the top. First item before us are the minutes. To consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting of October 5th, 2016. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Sorry.
Any changes, questions, or discussion on the minutes?
No, good to me.
All in favor? Signify by raising your hand. Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes pass. Next up, for information only. We have two resignations. One from the Board of Library Trustees, Michelle McCabe, Democrat, 1060 Merritt Street. Her term was 7/13 through 7/19. The resignation date was September 12th, 2016. And from the Golf Commission, Patrice Klein, Democrat, 73rd Alden Street. Her term was 4/16 through 4/21, and her resignation date was October 11th. Next item up, the Mill River Wetland Committee. And we're going to hear a report on their 50th anniversary of serving the town. Ms. Hoag, will you introduce yourself and tell us about Mill River?
Mary Hoag, on the board of the Mill River Wetland Committee. It's our 50th anniversary this year. Was started by our own Joy Shaw, Fairfield's Rachel Carson. She started out in Mill Hill, and we are in all the public and parochial schools in town, grades three through six. We train over 400 guides and reach over 3,500 students this year. So, we're embedded into the curriculum, about, you know, a pretty good portion of the curriculum. We do development for the teachers, we train the guides, and then take the kids out. And this year, we've been working with the museum, we're taking walks, and Joy actually, Joy did as well, taking people out on the walks in the open space, getting people to understand the value of all the wonderful open space we have in town. We're encouraging the kids to take their parents out and guide them on the same walks that they get, so they can become the teachers. So, we're really excited about it. We're looking forward to a big event next year. We're still in the works on that. We had a wonderful big event at Perry's Mill this Monday morning. Mike was there, a couple of other people, some of the founding members and our current guides, and then we did guide training right afterwards. So, we have our, we demonstrated our fourth grade model, which talks about a natural landscape and a man-made landscape, and the difference. You pour eight bottles of water in each, and in the man-made landscape, you get out about two and a half bottles' worth. On the man-made landscape, you get about seven and a half bottles' worth, and the water shoots out. So, it really is a great demonstration.
Very dramatic.
Yeah. Mike was there pouring water. You should get wet when you're doing the man-made side, yeah. So, I just wanted, so, and then, we're, tonight, we're having our pub night. We're doing it at the Bear and Grill at 7:30, so it's a lot of fun if you're able to come by.
We'll see if we get done with this meeting in time.
Yeah, we used to do the Garden Expo. We don't do that anymore, so, you know, we're all volunteer, all nonprofit, you know, so we so appreciate all the volunteers that we get. It's a, it's a really full community effort, so it's a lot, it's a, it's a big fun time. And I just wanted to say, it's a totally different topic, but I just got my Minuteman, and I'm very excited because I did this. It's totally off-topic, but the Voters Guide is out, yay! So, be sure and get your Voters Guide. Thanks.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for my colleagues?
Congratulations on 50 years. I live right across from Mill River, and I'm often in the Perry Mill area. I actually catch frogs with my kids, where I caught frogs when I was a kid growing up. So, it's amazing to see how the landscapes changed, and I encourage Eagle Scouts to continue investing their time to make sure the paths and the trails are set up there.
You guys saw that Great Bridge?
The Great Bridge. Chris Leclerc, Brian Leclerc's son.
Yep, and, and there's a environmental area that we've been trying to keep clear that another Eagle Scout did. So, yeah, the Eagle Scouts, another part of the community that's very involved.
I agree. Yeah, no, thank you. It just, it was the highlight of the kids' programs, and, you know, all four of my kids experienced it over the years, and it's something that they really looked forward to and would be very excited about.
And, and the teachers are, oh, you know, when you were a teacher, the teachers were, you know, really, obviously, integral to the whole process, too. So, thank you.
Yeah, the teachers and the parents.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we couldn't do it without the parents.
And certainly, on 50 years of community service, I can't think of a group that's more dedicated to our town and keeping our heritage alive, and what's special about Fairfield in doing that. But I go back to having listened to Joy Shaw. Not only was she a founding member, I'd, listening to that story, where she stood in front of a bulldozer to protect the open space.
Yep.
I mean, I just envisioned that was Fairfield's version of Tiananmen Square.
Yeah.
Where you see that one man standing in front of a tank that stopped the world, and Joy really stopped the world in that case. And I can't think of a more amazing thing. I just wish we had a poster of that. We ought to get some artist rendition of that, because I think that would be a great fundraiser for you all to sell.
Yeah, well, Joy's an artist, maybe we could get her to do it.
That would work. That would work. Thank you very much for giving us an update.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
All right, next up, item six. This is from the town attorney. This is to, this item was postponed from our last meeting, and it's to hear, "Consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that the town of Fairfield sell the property known as 2164 Fairfield Beach Road to Azero Davico and Antoinette Davico for the sum of $55,000, as more particularly set forth in the real estate sales agreement between said parties." May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
All right, then, Attorney Lesser, can you give us the particulars?
Yeah, I think we went through this the last time, and I went through it. I'll just briefly do it again. This was put out to bid, and there were two bidders. The high bidder bid $55,000. There are two conditions that are attached to the sale. The first is that the new owner's going to have to maintain the bulkhead, which I think is just, is big rocks that's on the creek side. And they also, there's going to be an easement to the town, which will cover the entire piece, because the town has a pipe which runs through the, a drainage pipe which runs through the property. It's such a small piece that rather than try to delineate the easement, just better to, they'll give us an easement over the whole piece, so we can get our equipment in and not have to worry about it if there's a problem. I note, just for the record, that I received this morning from Attorney Paul Sobel, a letter. He represents the low bidders on this property, and he sent this letter along with a plan from Alexandra Mock, and I believe that you've all been given a copy of this with regard to what could, could be done with this piece. He may, he may be here. Is Mr. Guiala?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So, he's here, and he may want to address the board at some point. But Brian Carey is here, and I thought it would be good to have him explain. He's read this, and I think he can explain what this means and the process that they, that he went through, or that the Conservation Department went through before they decided to sell the piece. If that's acceptable.
Well, if, Mr. Lesser, if you'd be kind enough to let us call the folks up to the podium, that would be appreciated. And it probably makes sense, if there's a proposal, first of all, let me go to my colleagues. You got this today? Did you have an opportunity to review this?
I haven't had an opportunity to do it. I think I received a letter from the Mockes earlier in the week I read, but I hadn't gotten this today.
All right. I believe Ms. Mock is here?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to hear from her, as long as she's here and we have this before us?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Before I yield the floor, I just want to make one more comment. You have three options tonight. You can approve it, in which case it'll go to the RTM for approval. You can deny it, you can say, "We're not going to sell it," or order it to be rebid or put back to auction, whatever, or you can postpone. So, that's up to you.
Thank you. Thank you. What I was going to suggest, since we just got this, is to have Ms. Mock give us a summary of this, all right? And then perhaps have Mr. Carey add his comments after we've heard. First version, if that sounds okay.
I'm okay with that.
All right. Ms. Mock, would you introduce yourself, please, and, and give us a summary? This is, not asking you to read everything, because it's before us, but if you could kind of summarize what is being proposed.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Mock, and I'm a wetlands and soil scientist. I'm a landscape designer, geologist, hydrogeologist, and also a certified professional in soil erosion control. And let me talk about our alternative plan, and the reason why we are here today, and actually, I'm happy to present it, because we would like to save this little piece, because we understand and we believe that this is supposed to be preserved as an open space, because it is so important. It is a small piece, but in the area and the location is so important. And let's go talk about where it's located. So, it is located on Fairfield Beach Road, and behind it is Pine Creek, which is a tidal creek. And it's located on a geologically young structure or deposit, which is spits, or the sand spit, and it was formed by a longshore current. And the spit is very important, because it actually protects the tidal creek and protects the estuary, and also protects the connection between the tidal wetlands, which this Pine Creek connects the water and provides salt water, too. Also, it is very important, because as you know, and as we've all seen during the superstorm scene, it is an area which is very prone to flooding and erosion. So, every little inch of it's supposed to be protected and stabilized, and make sure that it's stable. Also, it is a very important area, because Connecticut DEP recognizes this as endangered species area, and it's marked, and I did provide you with the map, which shows that it is recognized by Connecticut DEP. So, what we're proposing for it, for this area, we are proposing to restore this area the way it used to be. So, what it used to be is a part of the beach, and this is the upper section of the beach, where usually you will find dunes. What dunes are usually are covered with are with the beach grass. So, the proposal on the front of you, and if you can take a look at the map, which we are proposing, the green space, we are proposing to turn this into a totally environmentally friendly area, which will have several elements. So, we are proposing the beach grass, which is very essential for this area, and we are proposing the beach grass to be planted over many dunes. So, those many dunes, because of the small space, there are going to be many dunes, are going to be covered with the beach grass, which is going to be capturing the sand, which is very important in this area, because we are losing sand, and, and that's what, because of the beach erosion and because of the, of the wind in this area, as you see, this area is getting narrower and narrower, and it's eroded by, both by the wind and by the wave motion. So, the, the grass is going to be stabilizing the area and protecting those mini dunes and capturing more of the sand grains, which are airborne. Along the edges, we have native vegetation, which is going to be flowering, and it's going to be supporting habitat, which is going to be good for pollinators and also for birds. In the middle, we have a pathway, which will preserve the, the open space and give an access to the neighborhood, and also anybody who would like to actually see this unique place, because you have a view of water on both sides, and this is very unique in the whole Fairfield County, I think. I found this area very special. And then in the middle of the pathway, we have a birdhouse, and it's not going to be a, any birdhouse. It is going to be housing the purple martin colony. And why they are very important, because they're in decline in our coast, along the eastern coast. They spent winter in Brazil, and they come here to nest. And as native Indians discovered a long time ago, they are very friendly to human beings. You can basically touch their eggs, you can touch their hatchlings, and they don't really care. They actually like to be close to, to human beings, because they feel that the predation is less when they are close to, to activities. And what we would like to do, we would like to engage a community, we would like to engage middle schoolers and invite them over to help us to plant the beach grass, to understand the harsh environment, which dunes are showing, and also to monitor the birds. And this will be like one of a lifetime experience for kids, because they can actually take notes how many eggs in each cavity we're going to have, and see them, the hatchlings growing, growing, and then see them flying. So, I think this, this will be a unique educational opportunity. And I would like to show you how this actually fills, fits into your 2000 Town Plan of Conservation and Development. And I'm aware that you have a new draft, which kind of revising the old plan, which was not adopted yet, so it's still in the draft form. But the draft is not that much different in the areas of environment than the approved 2000 plan. So, this plan recognizes that the area is located within the shore area, and in the special district, which is the beach district. And the district was created, because this is a different area than anywhere in Fairfield. It is very densely populated. And historically, it started as a beach housing and little small cottages, and that's why we have this density. This plan recognized this as a problem, and actually offers that the, any future development along the Pine Creek of the street be discouraged, and the plan would like to preserve as much open space as possible in this area, and just lower the, the density. The plan also recognized that this is frequently flooded areas, and calls for this area to be maintained more ecologically. So, it means that we have all parking, we have all the structures, we have the pavement, but we really don't have any green ground cover there. If you go there, there are like few bushes here and there, but there's no really green area there, which this area is really lacking. And it calls for protecting the environmental quality, so it talks about the air and the noise and the appearance. And we've heard that the purchaser, the potential purchaser would like to use this as a parking. So, this is what it's going to be. It's going to introduce noise, and the appearance is not going to be the one as a green space, which actually is soothing, and it's not only important for us humans, but also for, for the wildlife, and the air quality, the noise of the cars, and et cetera. And then the plan discourages the development within the flood, flood zone and parking area compacted soil. It's nothing else but another way of developing the area. The plan supports and encourages the participation of citizens and the youth, and that's what we're offering. We would like to engage kids and be part of it, and enjoy the space, and, and take the opportunity of this coastal area. And also, they create a place which is in harmony with the environment, and obviously, the density of development is not in harmony of this very sensitive coastal area. Shore Area Management Plan is a very important section of this plan, and it was created by Shoreline Advisory Committee, which this board approved and elected. And they also recognize this area as a coastal resource, so something which is supposed to be especially protected. And they also see the intensity of the development as a huge problem. They promote open space, and they would like to, they would like to decrease the nonconformity in this area. So, by selling this piece of land to somebody else who lives across the street and is not immediately adjacent to, you actually increase the nonconformity, because now you have two pieces of land, and you have to recognize that every single parcel there is nonconforming, because it's too small, has too small lot size. And now you have two parcels which are going to be nonconforming, which again is going to be another nonconformity, creation of new nonconformity.
Just, just to clarify, no matter what we do, there are going to be two pieces of land that'll be nonconforming.
Well, but open space, it's not an, it's a different story. It's not a parcel. And they would like you to provide the public access, and this parcel provides a public access, address stormwater quality. So, parking area, of course, is going to create problems with stormwater quality, because they're going to be run out from the cars, vice versa, when you have green area, which actually filters the, the stormwater and improves the quality. And stabilize the area and prevent erosion, so the dunes will do exactly this. Now, shellfish commission is being recognized in this plan as well, and they have a special interest there, because Pine Creek supports the very rich shellfish area. And you can say, "Well, you know, it's not, it's not good quality, the water is maybe not that good quality, and you can't really harvest the shellfish." But this shellfish is so important in that area, because what shellfish does is it filters the water, and actually, it maintains the quality of the water. So, it's really crucial for the area to, for them to be there. Now, the end of the plan is, it talks about the historic and visual qualities, and obviously, it talks about the preserving of the coastal view, so you would like to maintain this access. You would like people to come and be invited to the space, and actually enjoy those views across the street of water. And also, the most important, prevent the degradation and the, along the shorefront. So, we are proposing to restore the area and put this back as a habitat and make it viable, and raise the value of the surrounded properties, vice versa, allow this to be degraded into a parking area. And Anthony Golierno is here with me, and he would like to talk about other issues which are more erosion and stormwater and safety.
Mr. Selectman, may I? Thank you. If that's okay with you.
Sure.
Good evening. Just a little quick history. I know we took up a lot of your time already, but I bought 2154 and 2155 earlier this year. And when I bought these two properties, came along with it some very heavy violations from the DEE pay, in regards to some, some past things that the previous owners had done there. And one of the things was that the property next door, that was town-owned, had quite a bit of debris on it, and there was an old fence on the property line between the two of us. So, I went in there, and I took care of all the DEP problems, and I built the bulkhead with the permits and the approvals. And I decided that I wanted to try to help the, the community in that piece of property that was owned by the town, had a very old pipe on it that was destroyed by the salt air and, and salt water. So, I worked with Chris, who was in the engineering department at that time, and the highway department, and we worked together, and they actually provided me the pipe, and then I put the pipe in to replace that section of pipe that was damaged and destroyed. So, after that, I put some sod over it, and I know I'm, I'm trying to create my own little area there, and I apologize if I offended anybody, but the main reason why I did that was so I wouldn't have any erosion near my house. So, that being said, I'd like to just touch on a few things. I know that when the RFP went out, it was, it was clear to me that the awarding of the bids were not necessarily just on the number, but it was also based on what was best for the town, and that was in the, in the RFP. So, you can see that on, you need my glasses, sorry, page six of seven of the RFP. It says, "Or accept any proposal deemed to be at the best interest of the town of Fairfield." So, I think my proposal, which I did make to the town, not officially to this board, but I made it to the Conservation Department way back in the spring, when I first started on this as mentor. Excuse me, I got my allergies. That being said, there's another, there's another paragraph on seven of seven, the award of the bids, and it actually says that the low bid is, is, could be the aworder, but that was, that's just like kind of a typo that my attorney says, and I'm not an attorney, so if I say something that's not legally right, just, you know, let me know. But it says that, no, you can't use that and say, "Okay, you were the lowest bidder, you win." So, the implication was that it was supposed to be the highest bid. But I still believe that I have the best use for the property, because I own the property adjacent to it, and I'm worried that somebody's going to do something there. And the only thing that really survives this, this transaction is this contract, that by the way, is, it's not dated. So, the contract on itself, the copy that I got from the internet, was signed by the purchasers, and I believe you, Mr. Selectman, was never dated. And then there was a subsequent survey that was prepared on September 29th, that basically showed where the property lines were. Now, I'm worried that the buyers really don't know what they're in store for, because the, there's a bulkhead to the south of us on 2171, that's actually in a, in a failure state. It's a wood timber bulkhead that, you know, we believe may fail at, at any given point or at any storm event. So, we're really, I'm really concerned with my property. I think I, from the community, has told me I did a pretty good job cleaning up the property and building a nice house there, and I do take care of my landscaping, and I like trees and shrubs as much as I can, I can plant there. So, I'm asking you tonight to, to postpone your, your, your vote on this until we can get some more support from the community, and/or, or deny their application or their bid, and, you know, possibly accept my bid.
All right. Thank you. For clarification purposes, any comments or questions from the board?
You own both houses on both sides of this piece of property?
Actually, 2154 is adjacent to it, and 2155 is across the street diagonally. So, I have a house, 2155, that's on the Long Island Sound, and I have, it's on, I'm not sure what page this is, but in your pamphlet here. And I own the new house, that's 2154, here, over each road. It's not on the map right now, but I, I brought a picture if you need to, if you'd like to see it. Mr. Chairman?
Sure. I'm not sure if you were able to. Yeah, I did. I walked, walked through it, okay. The blue house is yours?
Yeah, this is the one I built this year.
Okay.
And this is the vacant piece.
Yeah.
And then across the street, I own 2155.
You own that fence?
Uh, no, next door to that one.
On that side?
Yeah. I'm not sure. But I can show you the, the bulkhead that's failing right now, is this one here? You can see that all the, all the tiebacks are rusty and out to the elements of the weather. And this line right here is on the survey, this line, there's actually like two feet of this line that the town owns, and then 2171 owns the rest of it. So, something has to be done with it, you know, because I want to, I want to make sure my, my property is protected, you know? I put a lot of money into the house, and I love it here. I'm going to retire here, so I want to make sure that, you know, that nothing could happen to my house.
So, go back to the other, yeah, so that's the piece of property we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was the vacant one next to it that's got all the stuff.
That's what everybody thinks.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the survey was done on 9/29.
Okay.
And maybe, you know, I can put some stakes in, or maybe with the town engineering department could put some stakes in to show you really where the property is. Because if you, if you thought about it being the vacant piece that's disgreveled like it is, then it's, it's a no-brainer, but it's really the piece that's attached to my property.
Yeah.
Well, not attached, I'm sorry, that, that is.
Adjacent.
Adjacent to my property.
But that's a fence across the front of it.
Yeah, I put it up so nobody would go in there and damage the sod and stuff, because I don't want people to just go park it in there, which I understand, and I told you that, I apologize.
You put a fence up across town property to keep people off of our open space?
Correct.
Okay.
And I apologize for that, if that's something that, you know, I shouldn't have done, but it's just a, I can take it up in an hour if I went there, you know, it's just a rolled-out little wired thing.
Do you have permission from anybody at town to have the fence up?
No, I didn't ask for permission to put the fence up.
Okay. Taking it down might be good.
Okay. It'll be down in an hour.
Regardless of what we sort out here, but.
It's fine.
Until it's somebody else's property, that might not be a bad gesture.
Not, not, not a problem at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
No.
What I was going to do is, if you will, let me check and see if I have any, just on, we talked about the fencing. Are the trees on that property on your property or on the town's property?
According to the survey, which was given to me by the town engineering department, it seems like they're really close on the line. One of them's actually over the line onto, onto the town's property, and one of them's right on the line.
Yeah. Is part of, is part of your proposal?
Yes.
Are you suggesting, did I read somewhere here you were going to maintain this somehow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, my, my original proposal in the spring was that I Yes, my original proposal in the spring was that I would implement Alexandra's plan with the help of the conservation department, pay for it and maintain it. And I was willing to put that in writing and put it as, you know, as a covenant restriction to the property, or, you know, work with the town and try to make it, you know, so that it would be there, and I would be responsible for it, yes.
Okay.
But this is something, this proposal was, and, you know, I apologize again, if, this proposal was made to the conservation department before it went out to bid. And so the whole thing kind of steamrolled once it went out to bid. And, you know, I really wanted to just enhance your property and kind of make it look good. So this proposal just didn't come up in the air today. This proposal's been out there for a while.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I have one more question. So did you hire Alexandra to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
In the beginning of the year, in the spring. So, but it took a long time for the conservation department and, you know, go back and forth, and then all of a sudden, the best thing that could happen is it went out to RFP, and then I won the RFP. Obviously, I didn't win the RFP.
Right.
And I'm not here opposing the RFP, only in the points that I brought up. I'm opposing that we can't use it and enjoy it as town-functioning property that creates open space, not just a parking lot.
So you're going to take the grass up that you put in and create the dunes?
I have to, yeah. Well, not that I have to.
That's the proposal.
Yes, I would want to. And I would, I could post a bond for that in the amount of whatever, you know...
To be clear, that would be something we, if that was accepted, it's something we'd work out with conservation, because there are two issues there. Who does the work? Is it done to the right quality? And some way of, which hasn't been proposed, some way of confirming payment to the town for maintenance down the road.
I don't have a problem starting a fund, you know, for that property. I mean, I'm very interested in, you know, I've worked in the town that, I did some work in Ridgefield, and I donate, you know, quite a bit of my time and labor. But, you know, this was more of a thing to get the community involved, and maybe have the kids come down and help us plant grass, and come back each year and see how the grass is growing, and see what happens after a storm, and, you know, there's, this particular property, I'm sorry.
You mentioned kids a couple times. Have you had any communication with any of the middle schools? I think you referenced Tomlinson Middle School in here.
Well, Alexandra is kind of my point person on all that. The one thing that I just forgot to talk to you about is that this particular property is very, is very important to that roadway. I don't know if you know that that roadway is pretty much the narrowest point at where this property is. So if it were to be damaged by a storm or something, it could undermine the roadway. So that's why this property's so, you know, you know, it's, not only that I own the property next door, you guys have the road, and you're accessing all the other people down the end of the street. You know, God forbid we had another storm and it would all wash away, it'd be a problem. That's why we're working with the DEP, and I'm worried about that other bulkhead, so I'm going to notify them on that.
All right. Well, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, if we ask Brian Carey to come up and give us his thoughts. Mr. Carey?
Hello.
If you would, just introduce yourself.
Yep, I'm Brian Carey, conservation director for the town of Fairfield, and I just want to go basically through the timeline of this, because it's a little confusing the way it's being presented. I would say most of what they've presented today is true, but the town did do its due diligence and looked at this parcel through several boards before going out to bid. I talked to Mr. Golaro back in March of 2015. Before this, he actually came, as he spoke on record, he came to the conservation department and basically said, you know, "I have this parcel next to me, it's not," the word "open space" has been kind of thrown around a lot, "it's not beaded open space, it's basically an orphaned parcel that was taken through foreclosure, tax foreclosure in 1958." So it's not something that's ever been utilized by the town for any type of passive, you know, active recreation. So when he came to the town, he basically presented, you know, a planting plan, not as extensive of what you have today from listening to Mrs. Mock talk, from her, I think her plan stated October 16th or October 19th. Some of what she said today, I agree with some of it, you know, not necessarily agree with it, but a little bit irrelevant at this point in the process of bringing forward the RFP for your decision. Basically, in March 2015, Mr. Golaro did present a planting plan, at which time I told him it looks good, great idea. I can't give you authority to go out there and do this, this is town land, town, it's not even open space, it's town land. So, you know, basically, he made a proposition, "I would like to buy the property, you know, this is the type of plan I'd want to use," all, you know, everything he basically, all the points he put forward about, you know, his adjacent property, have a planting plan, you know, restrict development, I agree with all of that, and so did all the boards who looked at this and put forward the RFP with the conditions they did at the time they reviewed it. The piece of property itself is .02 acres, it's probably a little bit bigger than this room, as you've seen, 882 square feet. To maintain an open space property, if it were not to be sold and come back to the town, and there was some agreement worked out where it's planting, is really difficult for the town to maintain. There's already a lot of territorial issues in that part of the beach, just because of parking, and just the proximity of the houses and the law lines. We routinely get calls currently from people who are going out to the jetty fishing, walking across private property, people who are parking in areas that are, you know, not, you know, private property. So there's already a lot of issues to have an open space parcel where, you know, it could be left to some parking or public access is a little bit, is a little bit difficult for the town. We've experienced those issues a little bit further down on the beach, on the property that we bought on 980 Fairfield Beach Road, where we've kind of struggled a little bit to come up with a final use to that. That particular property's over an acre, so, you know, although I agree with some of the findings of Mrs. Mock, you know, the resource value of the property is so small with the dune system, it's not a lengthy contiguous dune unless you were to have something built, you know, that would stretch a broader area, it's not going to have much protect, long-term protection for, you know, where you have lots of that size. This did go in April of 2016, it did go in front of the land use acquisition committee, because again, this is kind of a new process for us, where someone brings forward a proposal, they want to buy a piece of property, and, you know, we basically are, you know, are looking at a way to, you know, divest it out. So land use, land acquisition committee looked at it, I wrote them a report that I believe has been presented to you with the 14 points, and every piece of information that basically came through. They looked at it, they agreed that it really had no long-term use for the town in its present state, or, you know, if it were to be, you know, held by the town in some way developed it, it's just, it's a, it's a drain on available resources going forward. That being said, again, we went forward, had an 824 review done, planning and zoning, looked at this, again, they concurred that there wasn't really much of a use going forward. I mean, the highest and best use of this is basically to get someone, adjacent landowner, to buy it. So we did go out to RFP, and the bids came in, and the highest bid was $55,000 tops. Now, the property has sat since 1958, I mean, if you look at aerial photography, in not much more condition than it's been now. So, you know, again, I don't disagree with the idea that there's a failing bulkhead there. I mean, that was one of the reasons we, you know, went to the commission and said, "Yes, this is probably not something the town wants to own for long-term liability purposes." So that was, that was another reason, you know, if it remains open space, you know, if we wanted to hold it and designate it open space for some, for some reason, then the town is looking at going forward and fixing that, because we would have a duty to stabilize that property. Now, if we turn this over to someone, and clearly in the purchasing agreement, it makes no doubt about it, that they are liable for the repair and maintenance, long-term maintenance of the bulkhead. I know Mr. Golaro said something about, "Well, I don't know what they're getting into." Well, their lawyer better explain to them the purchasing agreement, because they are taking all liabilities. This isn't a warranty deed, it's being sold to the property through quick claim deed, so they are taking, they are taking all liability from the town. I don't know, going forward, you know, as far as, you know, getting kids involved and all that, I don't know. There's other properties we have that would probably be more beneficial than this. Again, there's a lot of territorial issues down there that we have on a daily basis, and parking is an issue. So, you know, as much as this is a great plan, I understand why someone's willing to pay the amount they are to have this parking area, if that's what they wish to do in the future. Unless you have any more questions.
Good. Any questions?
Did the winning bid submit a plan?
They did not have a plan, no. But the ultimate goal of it was to have an easement over either way. I mean, no matter who bought the property, it was going to have an easement, so.
So, and I was thinking about that. The idea of the easement is so the town can get on the property if we need be, right?
Because of the pipe.
The pipe.
Right, the pipe.
Plus, we also wanted to limit development, but it's not, it's not a building lot, so, I mean, it could never be built upon. And that was, you know, that was another reason when we looked at it, that we said, you know, there's no, this is the best alternative, you know, if it was sitting on a building lot, you know, they probably would have been more hesitant to, you know, sell it, or, you know, because we, I understand the flooding issues down there, and a lot of what they said, "We have a major coastal storm," you know, that area is very susceptible. And the last thing the town wants to do is be adding another building lot, you know, down there where, you know, we have more, you know, potential liability, fixed road and that type of aspect of it.
So, you know, going down the scenario, the person, the purchaser, the winner of the RFP for $55,000, if they choose not to fix the bulkhead, what recourse does the town have on that?
Well, that's actually DEP issue, really. I mean, the condition of the bulkhead is DEP, but we don't really have much recourse on that, you know. Again, when Mr. Golaro had violations against him from, I believe, you know, he's talked about the failing bulkhead, that is not something that the town got involved with, I mean, that's state jurisdiction.
It's the same kind of issue with a property next door to this that has, needs repair and work on the bulkhead. We don't have recourse on that either, and as I've talked to a number of the property owners down there, even if you want to repair your bulkhead, you also need DEP approval to repair it.
Yeah.
And a number of them have been kept by DEP from doing the repairs they wanted to on a timely basis, or to the extent they want to.
That's right. And one of the problems that comes up is that all these properties are, you know, all the contiguous properties down there with this bulkhead are individually owned, so there's no comprehensive plan to, you know, put in 1,000 or 2,000 feet of bulkhead. That's why when you drive down Fairfield Beach Road, there's basically a different design everywhere where they go. That strategically, that's a problem, but that's a problem that the state really oversees and not the town. I mean, if the town were to, you know, that's a DEP permitting issue.
You there?
No.
So just to summarize, yeah, I just, no, you've had your chance, if you will, at the moment. Trying to keep this from turning into a debate of sorts. But from the top, I'm looking at this that if the town sells it, then we basically have turned over liability for the bulkhead and the future costs and liability. And in terms of, you know, open space, we've just bought a lot on Fairfield Beach Road further down, it's much bigger, and potentially, if we're going to do something for students, that type of thing in there, and that's under control of the conservation commission, and we'd have the opportunity to do that, if that were part of the curriculum and something were based as part of that. I'm a little bit concerned that for so long this has been fenced off, and town property has been kept from the neighborhood and anybody else. Also concerned that there's no parking.
There's no place to park.
So the idea of bringing a school bus full of students or bringing other people down there is certainly concerning on my part in terms of what's taking place. And...
I just address one...
If you could.
Just legally, I want to make you aware of one thing, and Sleckman Timmy had kind of anticipated with one of his questions when he asked if the high bidder had submitted a plan. This was done by RFP, and the RFP was simply high bidder, and they would have to accept conditions. This gentleman has presented a plan. Consider a plan, I think you're going to have to open this up again, because now you've changed the terms of this RFP, essentially. So the man who was the high bidder, he's been frozen out of that, he doesn't have a chance to submit a plan of his own, which he would have the right to do. As I'm sure you're aware, in the bidding process, anytime there's any change or any question, goes on the website, the question is made available to everybody, so everybody has the same information.
Just to clarify, the RFP talked about somebody buying this.
Correct.
The current proposal being made is that the town maintains ownership, and they fund the town's development of that, be it just dunes. So it's not going out to bid again, it's not, nobody's purchasing it, there's no change in ownership, he's making a proposal to the town.
To keep it.
That he would, the town keeps it, and I'll fund the landscaping, for lack of a better term.
That's correct, but if you do decide that you want to do something along the lines of a plan and sell it, I think you're going to have to...
Okay. Just wanted to clarify where we were.
I think you decide not to sell it, that's correct. If you decide, "We're just going to turn the sale down and we'll keep it as open space." I think there's some issues, legal issues about someone offering to maintain town-owned property, but that's for another day, which you might have to get into.
The, Brian, any estimate on what it would take to repair the bulkhead that's currently there on that property?
I mean, I couldn't, I mean, I could do some over-the-nap calculations, but...
Just try and get a feel for our cost of liability.
Hundreds of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, I mean, between permitting and, you know.
So we can sell this or be on the hook for...
I mean, I would say, you know, conservative estimate would be at least $100,000.
Okay.
Because between the design and the permitting, and, yeah, I mean, you're, anytime you get into the navigable waterway and your designed bulkhead, you're looking at substantial costs and restrictions and work methodologies that were required.
So that's a cost that the town would have to assume at that point, so that would be it.
I mean, when this, when this proposal first came up, and I went to the property, and I looked at the condition of it, that was the first thing that came to mind, was that we probably don't want to be owning this, and the fact of the matter is, we probably didn't know in the full capacity of what our ownership stake was in this site. You know, anytime the town forecloses on a piece of property like this, they generally don't hold it for 60-something years, you know. Either they, you know, sell the tax lien, or, you know, get rid of it. I mean, the town doesn't generally hold residential properties in, you know, between a couple lots.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any more questions from the board?
No.
My question to the board then would be, given you all got this information late in the day, and may not have had time to review it, do you want to take action today, or do you want to take time to review the proposal before us?
I think I'm comfortable taking action. I believe we put an RFP out there with the purpose of selecting a bidder to purchase the property. I understand the idea of making it sort of an open space, Park-esque thing, but, you know, that's for the winning bidder to decide what to do with the property, not necessarily, you know, someone to come in and say, "This is what should be done." You know, it's, we gave an opportunity for people to go out there and buy a parcel of land, and I think we should honor the RFP which we put out there.
Any thoughts or comments?
Yeah, no, I agree, and I do, I think that the parking would be a huge issue. I was thinking the same thing you were, that I can't imagine getting a busload of kids down there and turning it around, or where people would park to be able to enjoy the space. I mean, it would be nice maybe for the neighbors, but...
Yeah, I think we're all mostly the same mind, I'm looking at that and saying, "It's really too small and too difficult to get to, to really make it a community asset or resource in that sense." I think that there's a ongoing financial liability with a bulkhead, which I would, you know, certainly love to avoid, and I think if we have somebody that has bid on this and is willing to take ownership in that, that keeps it simple, and the town avoids significant cost in a long time.
You know, I think we're going under the assumption that, you know, parking lot, parking lot, you know, we don't know the intention of the buyer of how he wants that property to look, or how, you know, how he wants it to go. I mean, he may have all the intention of landscaping it too, and creating space for one of his cars or what, but the quality of the craftsmanship in the building which is going on there, and the pride of which people take of those houses down there, I'm sure the property's going to be taken... sure the property is going to be taken care of. I mean, he's making a large investment through the RFP to do that, so.
I would think, listening to what Brian said, and I appreciate your openness about that, is that it's something that the town doesn't have the resources to take care of. And as we've seen now, it's actually been fenced off, and if we were monitoring that on a regular basis, we would have noticed that and addressed that sooner. So, I think from that standpoint, I'm comfortable voting on this item today, assuming, Lori, was that a yes on your part in terms of that?
Yes, yep.
Any further comments from the public?
I just want to bring up one comment, and I think that when it first went out for RFP, I had several discussions with Brian, and I'm not trying to throw him under the bus or anything, but I believe that the RFP, you have the ability to sell it to whoever you want to sell it to, not necessarily the highest and best bid. It's what's best for the town of Fairfield, and that's what's in the RFP.
Correct.
So, if you said to me, well, Mr. Galero, are you willing to buy the property and take on the responsibilities for the amount that you offered, my answer would be yes. And then it would stay as a piece of property adjoined to my property, and then it would make sense that one property owner owns both pieces, not a property owner that's down the street owning one little piece. And then I would take the assumption of the responsibility to build a bulkhead. I know how much the bulkhead costs, I know what I'm getting involved in, I already did it on my property. So, I'm fully aware, which I know, and this is from being in the business 28 years, the winning bidder has no idea what they're getting involved in with the DEP.
Yeah, I would ask that you comment on what you know and not comment on what somebody else knows or doesn't know.
What I do know is what I was told about the RFP and what I read. And again, I'm not an attorney, but I'd like to say that my interpretations of the RFP is that you can sell it to me or them. It's up to the town and what you feel that the town's best interest is. I would rather see you sell it to me if you're going to sell it at all. And thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any further... Any further comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Any further comments or discussion?
Well, just a question on what he said. I mean, isn't an RFP spelled out that it goes to the highest bidder?
Yes, and under the terms, and I think the, possibly a point of where I would have a question on what we were just told, is that if that was going to be part of his proposal, that should have been his response to the RFP. If you were going to maintain it and landscape it and make it open to the Town Board of Housing Committee, make it as attractive as you could as part of the RFP. If we change the terms of that, I think we have to rely on what Attorney Lester said earlier, which is we'd have to go back out if we change the terms. We didn't ask for a plan along with that, but certainly had that been proposed in the spring, certainly if that was one of the options, that might have been something good to include.
Any potential bidder could have asked the purchasing department, can I submit as part of this a plan? That would have been posted on the website, and the answer would have been, you know, given on the website, which would have given every potential bidder the same leg up, no one would have had an advantage. That's the bidding process. So, again, going back, if you are considering selling it and you're considering selling it, first of all, the high bid was considerably higher.
Yeah.
But you can't, I don't think you can consider a plan as part of his bid and not give the other man.
Yeah. Attorney Lester, may I simplify that a bit, or try to simplify that? Let me rephrase that.
You could put it in layman's terms if you can.
Basically, if we're going to go ahead with this deal, we can vote out and go ahead. If we're going to decide not to sell it, we can decide that today. If we're going to sell it to somebody else, we kind of are on the hook to go back out to bid again.
Yep, that makes sense.
Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. All right. Any further comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right. In the end, thank you. All right, next up, from the Director of Public Works, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Does everybody want me to read this?
No. I'll make a motion to waive the reading.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The item that we're reading, these, just to clarify for the public, anybody watching at home, this is a, a lot of paragraphs that the state asks us to have the Board of Selectmen agree to. It's mostly boiler print and framing the discussion. We will vote next on the dollar amount in agreement for the steep grant. Mr. Hurley, can you take us through this briefly, and please confirm if what I said was correct?
Yes, just to also let you know, Mark Barnhart here is here as well, Economic Director. I'm Bill Hurley, Engineering Manager. We worked on the application together. The resolution that's in front of you is, I think, the same exact, or outside of site-specific, the same exact one that the board approved for the railroad canopy several months ago. So, it's the same word.
Railroad canopy, I mean, several years ago.
Well, several years ago, but then we had a...
Had to redo it.
Yeah, had to redo it, right. Just as a formality, but you're right, that project was several years ago. This steep grant is for $300,000 for Sherman Green improvements, and it's 100% reimbursable. Mark, do you have anything else to add?
I'll just answer any questions.
The project does involve sidewalk improvements, drainage improvements for the area.
This is for downtown, right?
Right, correct.
So, basically, what we're doing is building a retaining basin underneath Sherman Green. So, if the water collects at the corner of Sanford and the Post Road, it'll be directed over there, and will no longer flood downtown every time we get a rain.
It will improve the situation. I can't say it's going to completely solve it, but it will definitely...
Trying to get you to guarantee this.
No, not one, we might need more than, but it will definitely help, that's for sure. And it will reduce the current, the number of times.
And again, just to explain, we've got, this item, Item 7, has a series of resolutions that the Board of Selectmen passes. Item 8 is actually the authorization to spend the money that will be 100% reimbursed, and that will go to the Board of Finance and RTM from here. So, this is more a descriptive phase that we have to agree to, to make the state happy. The next piece is where we get authorization. So, it will be two motions to go along with this.
Mr. Hurley, what's the construction timeline there, and will it affect businesses and traffic and that?
We are assuming the quick turnaround here for the town boards. The engineering department will be doing the design for the work, and we aim to try to have it constructed in the off-season of the gazebo, in the Sherman Green. So, we're probably looking at February, March, April kind of timeframe, as opposed to during the summer where there's so many recreational and downtown events going on.
That's going to be one of, so are we digging up the green?
Yeah, there'll be definitely some sections that will be dug up to provide the excavation for the storage units. And then there'll be some improvements on Sanford Street resulting in catch basin, maybe some additional piping as well. But that we could do, you know, a little bit later.
You'll be cutting open Sanford Street?
There'll be, yeah, there'll be sections that will be done. Most likely, we'll try to keep alternating traffic. We will obviously update the Chamber of Commerce and any of the businesses.
That's partly why I'm here, which is to work with the business community to make sure we lessen the impact as much as possible. I mean, there'll be some stabilization of the green that will have to take place during the growing season. You don't have to be planting grass, or I would prefer sod to lessen the amount of time necessary to ensure that we have a stable base there for the regular summer activities. So, that will have to be done, you know, actually when we get into more of the spring and the growing season, so. But I agree with Bill, we're going to try to do it as much off-peak as we can and try to lessen the impacts as much as we can to neighboring businesses.
We have had discussions with Jerry Lombardo and the, you know, Recreation Department that they are trying not to schedule any events, obviously, for April, and I think he said up to mid-May or Memorial Day.
So, you're hoping it's two months and done?
Yeah, for the excavate, yeah, if we start, if we, again, weather permitting, we could start maybe in late February or March. There's no harm done on doing that. We'll be able to do that and give us additional time. But, yeah, we're not expecting the project to take that long.
Okay. And then the sidewalks will also be done at the same time? Or is that a summer?
Yeah, I don't think you're going to be able to do sidewalks during that period of time, but we would like to replace some of the sidewalks there, because there's three issues that we're really trying to address. One is the flooding conditions that we experienced downtown during peak rain events, and a number of businesses, including those that we might be impacting on Sanford Street, are very much in support of this project and had submitted letters or a petition to support our application, so they really want this project to go forward. The second is make pedestrian improvements, because we've had some issues with the condition of the existing walkways there, so we'd like to improve those. And third is landscaping and just general aesthetics on the green. If we can make some improvements there within the budget, we're going to try to do that as well. But we can do the sidewalk piece.
Yeah, excavation in March, and then to form and pour in April and May is definitely possible, sure.
So, you're talking about the sidewalks in the green area, the ones that could, you know?
Yeah, I'd like to, we also, to the extent to which the budget will allow, we'll look at other areas attached to the green.
Continuous, yeah.
Continuous to the green, so if we can also do those as well, because I know there's a couple of areas where we have tree roots and there's lifted sidewalks and brick areas, so we'd like to address those as much as we can.
Any further questions?
No.
All right. We waived, we didn't get a motion to approve this, though, yet. So, for the item before us, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Department of Public Works, can I get a motion to accept?
I'll second that.
A second? Thank you. So, it's back before us, and we're still talking, but I just want to make sure we had that done. Any further comments on the descriptive kind of boiler plate in front of us?
No. I guess we just have to hope for not a lot of snow.
We do that every year.
Believe me. All right. Any...
None obscure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that item is done. Now, the item before us, or, let me go through this. Director, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works, resolve that the First Selectmen is hereby authorized on behalf of the town of Fairfield to expend up to $300,000 to fund a 2016 small-town economic assistance project labeled STEEP entitled Fairfield Center Drainage and Pedestrian Improvements. 100% of said project cost to be reimbursed by the Small-Town Economic Assistance Project. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay, that item is now before us. So, that's obviously a continuation, and this is the same steep grant that the last week in September, we were approved for by the state. So, we have to approve accepting it, and we have to approve expending the money so we get reimbursed.
Correct.
Okay. So, that's what's before us. Any questions for the presenters?
Nope.
Any questions from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Whoa. Guys, I could use another wave.
Sure, sure.
Let me preface it, and then I'll be happy to accept that motion. This is a motion from the Director of Public Works that will go to the Board of Finance and the RTM also for approval. It's to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. And this is an amendment to some streetscape improvement grants run through the state's Lotzip program. There are several grants that impact this. I think Mr. Hurley can give us a little bit more of an update, but I would be willing to accept a motion to waive the reading of the two pages here.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the waiting's been waived. The item is before us. Did we do that? Sheila, did we get the motion on for that?
To waive, yes.
To waive? How about the motion itself?
No.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the item before us?
No, we do not.
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the item is now before us. Mr. Hurley, if you will, fill us in, because this is a few grants and...
Yeah, this is a little bit of a complicated measure here. The Kings Highway Pedestrian Improvement Project is basically a sidewalk median and handicap accessibility pedestrian safety program. Originally, back in 2013, the boards approved under the Transportation Alternatives Program $1.2 million, of which 80% was reimbursable. Then, we had another grant fall into place in 2014 called a Lotzip, and that one is 100% reimbursable, very, very competitive, but the regional, now it's called MetroCog, and the six communities that it represents voted to accept it, and so we went through the town process, and so we had $800,000 added on to the $1.2 million project.
But the $800,000, so it's 100%?
100%, that's correct.
So, it was 80/20 on the $1.2 million.
Right.
But 100% on the $800,000. So, of the $2 million total, we only contributed 20%.
I think it was, yeah, 240 or something like that.
Well, 800 and 1.2 is 2 million.
Well, no, I meant the town chair, sorry, the 20% of...
240,000, correct.
Yeah. Just also, just to you make it more, so this proposal in front of you was to get our grant numbers associated with the numbers that the state has allotted for this, and that was $688,000. But before I even go into detail with that, if you don't mind, Mike, just five minutes before this meeting, the state gave me a call and verbally committed to even an additional $400,000 that would also include the right-of-way phase and drainage improvements within the project. So, the way I guess we could handle this would be is to vote what's here before, and then I'll be back probably a month or two later, and then eventually, the Board of Selectmen would have to do a project authorization letter for the, you know, for the final tweaking where they actually give you the exact amounts on the grant. But that one has to be approved by, with the current schedule, by February. So, if we backtrack it, we're, you know, kind of running out of time. So, I just wanted to make that clear, Mike, and as I said, I apologize, five minutes before you.
Yep. If you would. We've got, I think, three or four different grants going on here. We've got, we're modifying or basically increasing authority to spend up to certain funded levels.
Correct.
I saw a couple sheets earlier that laid all this out on one sheet or two sheets. Do you have any of those for us?
Okay. If you're referring to these sheets here?
Whatever you have that lays this stuff out.
There's a bunch of them. I can, okay, I thought they might have been in part of the packet.
Yeah, I thought, has Mr. Mayor going to step through this with some of us?
This is, but we just got...
Yeah, he just got that really minutes before.
Yeah, so...
I don't know if I have what you have.
It starts like that, the 14 points.
14 points. I've just got the 14 points.
Okay.
You've got mine on.
Yeah.
That was the last page of the packet I had. If I may estimate photocopies?
Well, here's my question.
Well, you can, I have a double on this one.
Okay, thank you. This has been evolving over the last couple days, so it's been kind of hard to get this corralled.
Right.
And what I'd asked for is a cash flow to show how much we were looking for and what our bonding authorization needed to be. I'd asked for something that laid out both the grants we have approved and the grants that we don't have approved, and a timeline that would show us when those might be. Because I don't have any way right now of determining whether 558, if it's included in our resolution, is the right number.
Right.
And so, what I'm looking for is a little bit more backup that makes it easier for us to do that. And I, and Bill, I'm looking for a timeline that lays this out so we know what the critical milestone dates are for this board. If this board, and I don't mean to speak to you guys, I mean, offer something, if to speak to you guys, I mean, offer something, if we needed to make a decision by a certain deadline, I'd be happy to have a special meeting that addressed just this one issue. So, we're clear on what it is before it goes to the Board of Finance. And I'm just, I don't think we have the, I don't know if we-
If you don't mind, if-
If we don't need to have a special meeting, we'll do it without that.
We could even do it by phone if we need to.
If we need to, for just, you know, but I think, I'm not comfortable with what we have before us, in terms of laying out for me what the four grants are, which ones are approved, which ones aren't.
Be honest with you, I'm okay with that, too, because now if the state's going to add more additional money, why go through it twice? I'll combine them and make it a lot clearer. And then, by then, we should have numbers pretty-
And to be fair to Mr. Hurley, he's trying to get the town as much money as we can, but some of this stuff is late-breaking news. So-
But the timing's not an issue.
Well, if you don't mind-
It will be at some point.
Yeah, that's, if, I'll go through the project schedule just to give you an idea. We had the design phase completed in the spring of 2016. The semifinal stage has been completed in September 2016. There is a right-of-way phase that is oncoming right now and has to be finished by February 2017. The final design is due at the end of January 2017. The advertising and the bid of the project is for March 2017. The project authorization, which is basically the state-town contract, addendum to a contract, the MMA that we've had in place already, that one is going to be, they have to get all the paperwork and all the approvals by February 22. So, that's kind of like our, right now, as the project stands, that's our deadline of have everything in. So, that would mean RTM approval, everything.
Could RTM approval occur in February or would it have to occur in January?
That's, well, again, with weather and all that, and if the third, or is it the third Monday, fourth Monday that falls, if that falls at the 25th, that's after the 22nd.
Okay. So, effectively, let's say January.
Right, that's what, so.
So, we can do Board of Finance in January and RTM in January, and we'd need the Board of Selectmen to approve it in December.
Right.
So, if we approve it in November, we're way ahead of the game.
Right, right.
Is that comfortable with everybody?
Yep.
And again, one of the things I just wanted, only because, you know, if I come through, and again, looking for advice from anybody here, but, you know, it was 2 million. Now, if I come back with, I was trying to do it in steps, but now if I come back with 3 mil, whoa, where'd this come, you know, I always hear it when I go to the meetings, you know, whenever something's escalating, even if it's good news, you know, they always want to know updates.
Well, especially with some of this being matched and some of this not being matched.
Right, yes.
I want to be very clear on what the town match is and what we're obligated to.
That's correct, yeah. Because a lot of the money is the TAP, 80/20, but they are actually increasing the LOT-SIP, which was 100%. So, we'll be getting additional money of that. So, I think, I'm okay with postponing it, and I agree, because I think right now it's too confusing, and especially since I'll be coming back to you next month with the other request. I'll try to get everything combined nice and neat in November, and then we only have to go through once. And then, when it goes through around the second time, if none of the funding changes, you automatically have the approval for the project authorization letter. If not, it's just a minor tweak that only the Board of Selectmen would have to do, most likely, and we'll be good. So.
All right. Bill, thank you.
Sure.
So, it sounds like we're looking at postponing this?
I think I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, will you have everything done for the first meeting in November? Would you need us to postpone it to the second meeting in November?
That's going to, I probably, if you don't mind, in a week or so, I'll probably know that answer because-
We kind of need to decide something here, I think.
Oh.
I guess we can postpone the first meeting, just postpone it again if you don't.
Yeah.
All right. May I have a motion to postpone this item to the-
Number 2.
To the, yes, first meeting in November. Date certain, the first meeting in November?
I'll make a motion to postpone.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on that item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The item's postponed. Bill, thank you. And thank you for trying to get us more money. I don't mean to, you know.
Yeah, no, I understand. And again, it's extremely confusing when you're dealing with two or three different-
This gives you an opportunity to get us even more money.
Yeah.
Please don't give up.
Keep answering the phone.
All right. Next up, from the Director of Public Works, "To hear an update on the Valley Road Bridge Project."
Okay. Something a little bit similar where this is really just as-
Excuse me, Bill. We want to take a quick break here, just for a minute.
Okay.
All right. We're back in session. Mr. Hurley, if you would be kind enough to give us an update on the Valley Road Bridge project.
Okay. We did receive, well, right now, they're, have completed the final design for the Valley Road Bridge, or they call it the 90% final design. There might be minor tweaks still to come. And so, with that, they gave a proposal estimate of how much the construction phase would cost. And the construction phase would be the construction of the bridge, project administration, the inspection, state oversight, and testing. That's all included. That's all that's left with the bridge. It is on the waterfall chart. The, what I want to do, again, is just to give the boards the heads-up on it, because it came at $3.1 million. And then, there's $16,000 in demand deposit money that has been spent by the town. And if the state ends up using that as part of their state oversight, we don't get it back. But if they only use half of it, we get half of it back. So, it's kind of like a placeholder for them. And so, I just wanted to let the boards know that, you know, probably sometime in November or December, that this project would be coming for a resolution and financing for the bridge.
Is this in our capital plan at that level?
What we commonly call the waterfall chart?
Yep.
Yes, I believe it is. Yes, it is.
I know it has to.
It's there. I'm just wondering what that dollar means.
The waterfall, and I can confirm it, but in the waterfall, we had, I don't know.
Just, I just need a-
Three, I believe it's 3.2 million in our waterfall.
Trying to get a ballpark. And I just didn't want, I didn't want this jumping from 1 million to 3 million. That was my real question. It's been around 3 million and it's continuing around 3 million.
Yeah, yeah. I believe it's 3.2 million.
Okay.
So.
Any further questions from the board?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, and that's 80% reimbursable, by the way, with the federal bridge program. So.
Is that locked in, that 80%?
Yeah.
Thank you. Bill, you said that was federal?
Yes.
So theoretically, the state can't change the federal.
Yeah, that's locked in. And again, same, that project authorization letter, which right now, for the bridge one, is scheduled around the holidays, would be the same thing. It'll list specifically the amounts, and it basically, it shows the commitment and obligation of funds.
Okay.
We put this all out first and then they reimburse us?
Yes. That's how it works.
That's why we need an authorization to spend all the money?
Right.
All right. So, that, like a school project, this is a little, but the reimbursement percentage is more locked in here, to Chris's point. But on a school project, we'll spend all the money. We're, get 20, now it's, I think, 25% of eligible costs, but they don't always approve all the costs we put in as eligible. So, our effective rate is generally 20 or 21% on school projects. But that's why we have to authorize everything, because we're not sure 100% what they're going to do.
Right, okay.
All right. Mr. Hurley, one, thank you for coming before us, and I like the idea of you giving this board an update, kind of a preview of its coming attractions. So, when we see it, we kind of have a perspective on it. So, thank you for-
Sure, you're welcome.
Good night now.
Right, thanks.
All right. Next up, tax collector, "To consider and act upon any tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended. May I have a motion to accept?"
Make a motion.
A second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any amendments?
I'd like to make an amendment-
All right.
-to change the amount to $11,874.94, followed by a period.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
The amendments before us, any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Say aye. The item as amended is now before us. Any further discussion on the item?
No.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor of the item?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's done. Thank you. And then, "To hear, consider and act upon any other business that shall probably come before this meeting." Any items?
I have a couple. One, for everybody at home, I want to remind you that it's Restaurant Week. My family and I have already taken advantage of three of the restaurants. It's a great opportunity to get out there and try something you wouldn't ordinarily go to. And I want to thank all of the restaurateurs for participating. I think this year, we have more than we've had in the past.
We have a good number of restaurants out there this week. Absolutely.
Okay. So, it's fantastic, and there are great deals, and it's a good opportunity to get out there and experience everything Fairfield has. Second thing I want to bring up is, last weekend, on Saturday night, I went to the Haunted House at the Teen Center with the haunted hayride, and it was fabulous. It was absolutely fabulous. I want to thank all of the town employees who were involved in it, the volunteers who help out, the actors. My son was incredibly petrified. He did sleep through the, sleep through the night. But for those of you who might want to dip your toe, consider going or not, it's definitely worth it. So, good job by the Public Works Department, everybody who puts that forward.
And that's going to be Friday and Saturday night again this weekend?
And Sunday, I think. They have Sunday, a time on Sunday as well.
And it's put on by our fire department, our Public Works Department, and Parks and Rec helping out. So, it's a real teamwork behind the town employees, and they've done a great job. Now, this is the third year running, so we're thrilled to have it out there. So, thank you for, and thank you for joining in.
It was my first year. We had, we had multiple families go at once, and it was, it was a good thing. So, it's a great thing the town puts on. So, I'm going to add that. And, you know, I have a crowd here. I wondered if I can get an update on the EDR location we have.
Certainly. As of this point, there has not been a decision made by the registrar voters. We have two registrar voters. They both need to agree on what the EDR site is. EDR being Election Day registration, which was approved in the state, I think, three years ago. So, we've done it since then, but we have to pick a site to do that. The Secretary of the State has asked that our site be identified and communicated to them by Monday. So, we will know on Monday.
Okay. If there's not an agreement, is there a default location, which the town has?
Not to my knowledge, and we'll take that up with the registrars.
Okay.
Anything? Anything else?
No, I'm good.
All right. Then, in that case, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all.